Budget meeting in the quarter. And we'll do the election of office for president and secretary.
And I'm gonna John Bennett for president.
I second it.
See, you've called for a vote. Did you call for a vote?
Oh, can I call for a vote?
Alright.
I.
Bye.
Congratulations. Chair, I turn it over to you now.
Okay, so we need a secretary.
I nominate Larry for secretary. You're very welcome, Larry Brown.
Any further nominations? The nomination will be closed when we cast an amateur ballot for the downline question.
I think that's great.
Nobody seconded that, but.
I second it. I can't make it.
I'll second it.
It's okay. There is it.
Okay.
Abby, do you have a script? Somebody have a script for John?
Yeah. There's a script if you need it.
The script. Kevin, C G, Kevin.
Thank you very much. I am not going to read the budget message. I'm just going to recap it by high points. So, good afternoon, President Benton, commissioners and members of the Budget Committee. As your Budget Officer, it's my responsibility to prepare and present the proposed budget. And the company message, in accordance with Oregon law, I want to start by thanking the Finance Director, Debbie Sumitwagar, and our entire management team for their time and expertise in preparing this year's document. The proposed budget for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six totals about fifty nine million dollars, which is a fifteen percent increase over last year. This increase gives the Commission needed flexibility to address economic uncertainties, invest in cost-saving or revenue-generating projects, and continue aligning with the port's long-term strategic goals. As always, this budget is grounded in the priorities established by the Commission and reflected in our 2021 strategic business plan. We're emphasizing safety, transparency, financial sustainability, in preparation for the transition of bridge responsibilities to the new Fort River White Salmon Bridge Authority for H R W S B A, which you'll see throughout the document. So, just a little bit of context on the port's permanent tax rate. Your tax bill shows a three point three two cent per thousand. I guess it's some kind of mileage rate, and that roughly generates about a hundred thousand dollars a year to the port for our taxes. And that's about seven dollars per household. It's modest, but it is meaningful. Meanwhile, several departments such as the airport, marina, waterfront wreck, and some commercial properties currently operate at a loss or can no longer rely on toll revenue for support after this year. This is the last year that we're actually doing a transfer.
And when does the year end?
June thirty.
So, come on.
Well, the following. So, this budget we're working on is for twenty five, twenty six.
Okay, I was wondering about that.
Yes, so.
June's June thirty, the south begin.
Not of this year, but of next year.
I got it.
So, that makes it essential to shift toward revenue generating activities in the general fund. So, the Commission is exploring significant property sales, like the Big Seven and the Lower Hennel Mill Site. Those together could yield up to as much as eight million dollars. These funds could jumpstart high priority infrastructure like the Roundabout at Second Riverside and begin a commuting conversation about waterfront redevelopment. If the properties aren't sold, we still see potential in projects like developing storage units at Hennel Mill. Switching to personnel costs, personnel costs are down about seven percent. And this, what I'm reading to you is not in your packet, just in case you're looking. I'm just trying to summarize.
I just was.
Yes. Where'd you read this from?
Checking your fingers.
High points out of the, out of the five-page, three-thousand-word.
But you were reading, so I thought you were reading from the same.
Yes, these are, these are my cheat sheet.
Okay, I got it. I'm with it.
So, personnel costs are down seven percent compared to last year, mainly due to the move to all electronic tolling. That transition eliminated nearly eight full-time positions and is saving the port about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Did you say seven percent?
Yes, personnel costs.
How does that reconcile with what's on page sixty-three, where the percent decrease in budget for personnel, it's like negative, but whether, is that specifically the first first difference on page sixty-three that that's that twelve percent?
You know what I did is I looked at the big pie chart, you know? I just took the personnel costs from the pie chart and then compared it to the pie chart last year.
Okay.
So, you know, sometimes those things come across, and those are my two metrics that I remember.
Right, great.
And Debbie can get into the details as we progress here. So, we budgeted two point six percent cost consumer price index increase for salaries and a three point two five percent increase for materials and services. Capital investments, however, are going up. These are targeted investments in parking lots, tea hangers, and improvements to our industrial and airport assets that will help reduce our dependence on toll revenue. The administration fund includes five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contingency, and we're exploring a per-site account that could save us up around fifty thousand dollars per year for the next twenty years. It also includes funding for an update on our strategic business plan, which is, this is the last year of our five-year strategic business plan, so we want to put some money in there so we can do the next five-year plan. The general fund remains the engine of port operations, supporting about seventy-five percent of all the activities at port. This year includes a final two million dollar transfer from the bridge fund. After this year, this, that fund will be dedicated solely to the bridge and its replacement. A few capital projects that you will see, one point nine five million in airport containers, supported by one point three million dollars in grants, federal and state grants. Two new parking lots projected to generate a hundred thousand dollars annually. One point two million in bridge capital maintenance. And a three point eight million dollar transfer to the Bystate Bridge Replacement Fund to support future bonding efforts. Branded development will continue paying off legacy debt. We've got about two more years on that. While the waterfront recreation area will see dock repairs and LED lighting upgrades. And finally, we've got a new five oh one C three nonprofit. The Port of Hood River Foundation may soon launch a license plate program to raise funds for waterfront improvements. So, we, this is a strategic transition for the port. This year marks a major change. As noted earlier, by July one of twenty twenty-six, not twenty twenty-five, toll revenue will no longer support non-bridge-related activities. We're taking steps now to develop sustainable alternatives like increased parking revenues, hangar leases, and more active use of our real estate assets. I should note that the bridge traffic is down approximately five percent and what you're looking at as far as the year-to-date, but likely this is in response to the toll increase from September of twenty twenty. Despite that, bridge-related expenses are also down by about eight percent. That's primarily from the all-electronic tolling. And the bridge now makes up about twenty-five percent of the port's overall budget, as other activities are growing in the general fund. Most importantly, this is the year we complete the transfer of the bridge replacement efforts to the Bridge Authority. What I mean by that is all the grants and financing. This is likely going to be the last year where we will have spent the port's grants for bridge replacement. And all those other contracts have been reassigned. And so, in closing, this budget sets the port up for continued stability, smarter investments, and greater independence from toll revenue. I want to thank each of you for your contributions, your retained proposed budget, and your ongoing support of the Port of Hood River. I welcome your questions and look forward to any feedback. Otherwise, I can hand that off, or John can hand it off to Debbie to go through the budget.
I'll have to ask if there's any questions about that last month.
I have one quick, just to dress the elephant in the room. Clarifying, with a fifteen percent overall increase in our budget, when we are supposed to be cutting costs, is it safe to assume that those increases are for one-time capital improvement projects that are going to help set us up for financial success in the long run? And it's not a perpetual ongoing of a straight-up cost?
And I think it's even better than that. There are capital projects in there that you'll do one, or you can do one or the other.
Perfect.
And so, really, those larger numbers are there to give the Commission some options. You're not going to do all of them, but we need to account for them in the budget.
And then the other thing too is I notice everyone's real squished, and we have space, if anyone wants to spread out.
What is at the end of the table? Now that, now that we've opened up this.
Yes, so. Just want to make sure. Okay, that's it for me.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on page twelve, under the Operations Department. It says capital projects for fiscal, the next fiscal year, the year that we're discussing the budget for. And then the third bullet item, it says two hundred eighty-nine thousand transferred to the administration fund.
Sure.
It's been budgeted to cover the bridge funds' share, per-site account contribution.
Yeah.
There's all the moving parts there. Are we talking about? We're not talking about our normal first requirement. We're talking about the potential to put together this this side account.
Side account, yes.
Where we would, is it we'd put in nine hundred thousand, the state would put in three hundred thousand?
Yeah, we haven't figured out the exact numbers, but yes.
Okay, and then this two, what's this two hundred eighty-nine thousand?
So, I allocated, so the cost, if you, if you take, and I took the one point two million, because it's not exactly clear exactly where the three hundred thousand from the state fits in, so I budgeted a higher amount until we can figure this out with the state. But what I did was I took that one point two million that I'm estimating that we would have to pay, and I split that between the general fund and the bridge fund. And so, I took the F T E that ended up getting allocated to those two funds, and that's the ratio I used. So, of the one point two million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand is the bridge fund's pro-rata share of the one point two million. Yes, and then we budgeted the expenditure itself out of the administration fund.
Right, which will be covered by the bridge.
Yes, so the money, and there's a one, I forgot. Whatever the balance of that is, the nine hundred and some thousand comes out of the general fund and goes to the admin fund.
Great, I just wanted to be crystal clear on that. Thank you.
Transfers get confusing and have been the source of some problems for places in the past.
Especially when we were talking about the five oh one C three that's being set up. Is that including all things in the port?
Yes.
Okay, so what happens if we really get our act together, try to start figuring out some money for an administration building? How do we know? Is there a separate fund for the?
You're talking about a terminal building at the airport, right?
Yes.
Yes, but it's just, it's just as simple as people saying, hey, we're going to earmark this.
Right, okay, I understand that. So, I know it's there. Who controls that? So, okay, I understand, but, yeah, but people come and go. So, over the forty-eight years I've been working on this administration building on this side of the field, which is about what, I think, John, we got off, right?
We could, if Julie, if we could call the terminal building?
Terminal.
Please, because the port is also looking at potentially moving this administration.
Terminal is great, that's good, terminal building. So, my concern, if we, let's say somehow we didn't, some of us who are getting older and think it's not going to happen before we die, figure out a way for this to happen, how do we know that money will stay for that spot to do it, so that spot doesn't get given to something else what has been allocated all these years for? Because, because the foundation's there. We went through this with the last thing. Because it is there, but people change. Does anybody know that it's there besides a few of us?
Yeah, so, so within that nonprofit, there's two departments. There's one that focuses on the waterfront recreation, and then there's the airport.
Okay.
And so, and there hasn't been quite the momentum right now on the airport side. The focus has been on the waterfront wreck side, and so, just recently, the foundation has a mission statement and listed a list of priorities and projects for the waterfront wreck where those funds would be only, could only be used on. When it appears that there's going to be some momentum on the airport side, a similar policy statement will be made at that time.
And, and I understand what you're tracking, if people are to give money, and let's say to, to develop a terminal building, you want to guarantee.
It's going to be.
That if it takes five years, ten years, that money is.
Remembered what we were, and things change. I mean, people have come and gone, so the same original port people are not, so I'm just wondering.
How is that money?
How is that money saved for that?
Yes, so normally, within other instances, which I imagine we are going to pivot or emulate, is, you know, if you donate money and say, I want to, I want to buy a brick that is going to fund a part of the terminal building. If the terminal building is not built for whatever reason, then all of those funds that were earmarked by donors gets returned to those donors. It doesn't then just say, oh, we, yes, we didn't get a terminal building, but we're going to use your donation money somewhere else. That's not how that works. You're very, it's very focused on, you know, like, I know on, for example, Young Life, they have a dropdown of like, you can donate to a specific dance or a specific this, and that money stays with those things. And then, and the nice thing is that the accounting software is that we have, have the ability to track that so that we can have everything.
Okay, so, because I've been, I mean, that is something that I think is neat, and I would love to get involved with maybe fundraising for it, but how do we know? I maybe I'm too old to do it, but I'm thinking it could happen. You know, sometimes, so I'm thinking if that money got donated for that, then we can be assured that that's what it's for. And that's, I guess, is what people.
Legally, we're required.
Yeah.
Or required, and there's going to be total transparency.
Okay, so it's a legal, separately legal entity, so it's separate from the port, and it has its own bank account, or will have its own bank account. If it has any money to go into a bank account, it'll have its own bank.
It's funny, okay.
So, it's totally separate, but someone will always know it's there because it will have a bank account and all of that.
It's not that we're not interested in the marine and other things, it's just some of us are into the airport.
We like that, that's fine. We want to give you opportunities to get money.
But we have to get the word out, so we need to know, you know, is this thing just going? I honestly think people, and maybe not, but I think we can kind of get, you know, something going. I mean, I, I see it happening at Whalen again from her building, I think, I don't mind, we need a terminal building. You know, so anyways.
Yes.
Okay.
Debbie got one question on the first buy-down. Is that a one-time opportunity or is it a continuing program?
It, it's, it's basically a one-time opportunity. They, they, the state has allocated forty million dollars towards this. The maximum you can get is three hundred thousand. And, and there's another group that's, that's going through the process right now. So, if you had more of a liability than we had, then you had the opportunity to do this starting April first. There was the opportunity. So, there's, there's a certain, there's a certain group of local governments that are going through the process right now. If there's any money left over on July one, which we think that there will be, then we're eligible at that point to, to move forward with it.
Do we have to decide pretty quickly then to take advantage of it, to get in line?
Well, we, we need to get it in the budget so that it's available if, if that does work out. And we're still, we are still looking at some of the analysis to make sure that it's going to work out for us. We want to be absolutely sure before we go down this process. Either way, I mean, you don't lose the money because it goes to PERS, and it does buy down great. But how much of a benefit is a little hard to judge right now because we are reducing staff to, at the same time. We're looking at trying to buy down our liability, so.
There will be a, ultimately, it will come back to the Commission, most likely at the June meeting, to approve going into that program, because I think we have to submit the documents right after July one.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be first come, first served, starting July one, so we want to be ready to go on July one.
Do, do special districts have any tools for helping with that analysis for?
Themselves have a tool that's helpful. Also, we have investments with Piper Sampler, and they happen to have, that investment company actually has someone who's very involved in PERS and local government. And so, she's going to help me make sure that this is the right way to go forward. I mean, on the, on the surface and, and all the back of the napkin and all that kind of analysis, it looks very promising.
Okay, so I have a question. You know, because I guess I'm on the end, so, then we'll all be done. And you, and you all can just have more fun than you can possibly imagine, and you're not taking a nap. Kevin, outline for me what you thought that, where you think that the original cost estimates and who planned for that for the bridge when it was half a billion-dollar bridge? Well, the state was going to put in a couple hundred million or a hundred and twenty million, or whatever it was.
Sure, sure.
Washington State was going to put in some, and that's what it was, right?
Yeah, and Deb, Deb can kind of check me on some of this. So, originally, when the, when the cost of the bridge was five hundred million, that was before there was a lot of heavy geotechnical work. And the biggest driving factor of the elevated price cost up to a billion was the fact that the current bridge is on about forty feet of compacted gravel. And when the pores went through that forty feet, the bed plummeted into ninety feet. And so, that's going to require large repairs and so, and a greater cost. And there were a couple of other things just with inflation and, and other, other costs, but that was really the primary driver. I don't, anything else aside from that?
No, it was primarily inflation, because construction inflation has run way higher than, since the price. And John, what, so it's to my understanding from the last I heard from, from the Bridge Authority, was that the, the ask for the individual states remains the same. It's that we are looking at a different federal funding option that is basically double what we were looking at previously, because we didn't want for the burdens on states.
Okay, so we have a new administration back east. And it turns out that we have, we are, Oregon is of the six real blue states in this country. We are, well, I should say seven real blue states. Oregon and Western California are the last three on that seven. There's some East Coast folks over there that are ahead of us by a little bit. But my point is, is that you have a real blue state here. And you have an administration that's not dying to have anything to do with these blue states. Right now, we're having men and women showers, and we're not paying any attention to other things that they would like to do with D E I. I'm just saying what's what, not what may happen. If I was having my hand out for half a billion dollars at this point, I would be reluctant to say, gee, because that's a done deal. Now, my only point in saying that is that we're going to end up having to have this bridge longer than we may think we do, okay? So, when we set the plans up for stuff that we, that we fixed that was going to last for however long it lasts, I'm not sure that we all thought, gee, we might add four or five more years to that somehow or another, but I'm not so sure now that that won't happen. Point is, how are we going to make that, is that going to be just fine?
Yeah, no, I think you're bringing up some really good points, and I think that the Commission, and maybe some of you had been at the fall and spring planning sessions, but, you know, prior to this year, we had an eight-year C I P for the bridge. And I believe it was either spring or fall, we decided to extend that out to twelve years because of the issues that you're going to have. And so, so you're going to see about one point two million in the existing bridge to, or capital on the bridge to make sure that it's safe, that it continues to be operable. We're doing some spot painting and some miscellaneous steel repairs that Ryan's going to be heading up. So, your points are very well taken, and I think that there's a couple of things that are happening at the right time. One is us getting off the tolls for non-bridge-related activities, because the cost of the bridge operations in spite of us going to all electronic tolling, the capital costs are likely going to continue to go up. And frankly, there won't be anything else for, for non-bridge activity short of raising the tolls again. And so, so I think that this, that this budget specifically looks at a longer forecast time for when the bridge would open. You know, probably looking at twenty thirty-two in our, in our budget, you know, we had a ten-year forecast, and so, I believe we had twenty thirty-two.
That's what we, well, that's the current estimate.
So.
The painting on it is more spot, like spot that got damaged up there, those are going to be painted and may not be rusty and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, Ryan, you want to say a couple?
So, they specifically used weathered steel on that, so we don't have to waste the time to paint it because we're in such a time crunch.
Okay.
So, those will stay that way for.
They're okay.
Yep, the, the spot that we're talking about is the gussets plates down underneath.
Okay.
They've been calling out some pack rust for the last quite a few inspections. Going to get a professional to look at those and give us a more depth, look at the.
Kevin, what is our target date now for full funding for the bridge?
Well, that's a difficult question. I, I, going back six months ago, I'd say June of this year, you'll have a lot more information. When both of the state-long sessions will be over, and then that five hundred and thirty million dollar federal grant application should be known. I haven't heard of the status of that federal grant, five hundred and thirty.
I think they're going to open up the, because we applied, but then with the new administration, everything kind of went on hold. But they're, and they're actually adding more money to that pool, so we're, you know, I mean, who knows? Obviously, it's, it's, it's always a who knows. But we're going, the Bridge Authority is going to reapply then for the Bridge Improvement Program, the B I P, which is probably, of all the stuff that's out there right now, that's probably the one that fits best with this project, is the Bridge Improvement Program.
Well, and John, I think too, when you say, you know, we are a more blue state than a red state, but I think the one good thing that we have going for this is the, the Bridge Authority, as well as the Port Commission, I feel are both, you know, they're supposed, they are nonpartisan positions, but we are pretty balanced politically. So, we're able to lean on both sides of the aisle to try and work together to maintain that relationship and not, you know, chase those shiny objects and get lost in the, in the D E I, you know? But the things you're talking, we're, we're kind of business and construction and.
Have been going along at the speed of a slow cow, which one went right through my front yard yesterday. But now we're going to come semi-light speed doing so, right? And I'm sure there's a whole bunch of infrastructure money left over from several years ago that is parked someplace, which, and I know that the administration right now is dying to do a bunch of infrastructure works. I mean, there's offsets to me being funny about that quite a bit, so I, I, I will agree that there's, there's a very good chance that that might just fly right through. Shovel-ready is what makes all the difference as far as I'm concerned. You know what the heck you want to do, and you got it on the ground, and it's all mapped out. People just love that. If you just say, well, we need some money, but we're not so sure how much or when we want it, that one will near as well.
Yeah, we want to see bird ducks burying a row.
So, one goes our way to shovel-ready.
We're getting there. I mean, I think that D E I, I mean, I was hired in twenty seventeen to usher that process through, and here we are. We're getting there. I mean, I think that NEPA, I mean, I was hired in twenty seventeen to usher that process through. Here we are seven or eight years later and they're getting very close. So the tribal uh, MOAs are making good progress.
That's what Commissioner Cox is today, actually.
Oh yeah, that's right. Yeah. So, so I would say probably the next three or four months, you know, that we should have that final E I S environmental impact statement.
So we've finished the draft.
It's getting very, very close. Uh, so, uh, you know, I think the, the Umatilla are on board, very close to getting that MOA, the Akamaw. Uh, and then if the Warm Springs and uh, and Mesbury, you know, will hopefully, uh, you know, be, be a part of those ongoing discussions. So NEPA is getting very, very close. I think for the sake of, of the port is, you know, what's the port's role uh, in the new bridge project? And, and really, I think John hit on it, with the, the existing bridge going along for the appropriate amount of time. The other thing that's important for the Budget Committee is that, uh, to understand is that the Bridge Authority has no employees. They've got an awesome team of consultants, but they don't have uh, staff. And so, uh, I'm the interim executive director of the bridge and I don't bill uh, the Bridge Authority much time. But Debbie is their interim finance director and she does bill the Bridge Authority for her time. And so in the admin fund, you'll actually see a fifty-five thousand dollar uh, revenue source. And that's, comes from the grants that would be going to the Bridge Authority. That's reimbursing the port for our interim staff time.
The port does get reimbursed. I was wondering how that was, if that's just money going out.
Yes, there's a really cool sheet in here in the back that shows the percentages of our staff time.
Okay.
And so that, it, it, where there's one F T, like you can actually see in there what my percentage is on every single thing that's being worked on.
And that's what that, yeah, that's what that means.
Yes. So we actually, we keep uh, uh, almost like a consultant, consulting firm. We keep a timesheet and we break it down half hour and we code out all of our time so that Debbie and her team can put together some pretty uh, accurate splits for overhead and and so we can justify what it is we're willing to do. So I think those are the two main connections that the port still has with the Bridge Authority.
So, yeah, so I was saying, that's what I was wondering too, because I kept thinking the port should be getting some kind of money back. Was there still, I mean, it's still happening here. You guys are once again faulted. That's what's actually done that way.
Yeah. And let's see, I think we have, I think we, the other connection is that there was a billion dollar loan of which I think six hundred has already been spent. So this budget includes the remaining four hundred thousand of that loan. Uh, could, that they, that the Bridge Authority tap into.
And they do that as they get funding, or is that?
Well, it's actually as, as, as they have expenses without funding, that's when they tap into that.
Okay.
That likely won't get reimbursed until the new bridge opens. So it's real, that was really a, a, a a show of support by the Port Commission to the Bridge Authority to help them through some of these issues.
Is that any interest on that or just a play a minute? Okay, we're just supporting them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We want to see the bridges.
Yeah. I'm just curious, yeah.
So Debbie, you've got a presentation to make. Are we kind of jumping ahead to project specific stuff?
No, actually, this is, I, I didn't prepare a formal, um, a formal presentation. I, I like that it's more interactive. That's easier for me because I don't know what your priorities, what you want to know.
I guess I want to know if we, do we survive okay with the bridge money gone?
We will. And actually, um, yeah, I mean, it, yeah, it kind of is that buffer in there right now. Because when you look at the general fund, it does show about a six million dollar shortfall. But that's primarily capital. As primary, if you take out the capital, um, then it would be breakeven, but then there's also some, um, some revenue. So it's not, the, the capital isn't a total of six million. Um, the hit on the general fund, the capital is about four million. Um, so that other two million hopefully will come from the bridge. Um, but if we can get, if we can get the teahangers built at the airport and then either sell lower mill and have, you know, a, a chunk of money that will generate investment income, or if we don't sell it, build uh, uh, storage units or something, do something with that property. Um, that will pretty much start to, to cover those costs and, and make the port more breakeven. We also have some vacancies right now in our uh, industrial properties. And so if we can get those industrial properties back to, you know, close to a hundred percent filled up, then that will help a lot too with our, with our budget.
And I would say that, you know, Tor and the commitment to the airport, you know, being an airport that is almost running in the black or at least not in the red, is working on it.
We're going to be in the black soon, which is going to be, I think, a historic achievement for this kind of airport because everybody I talked to around the Pacific Northwest, they all get two or three hundred thousand from a sponsor every year.
Right.
So that's huge.
And that's something, have we ever talked about? Maybe, I know the county has no money in the city, nobody has any money.
City has money.
Most places, most places, there's a certain amount of support to an airport from the county.
I know.
And, and, and who never's never had that.
Yeah, there's no appetite for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Okay, so we just gone for maybe fifty-five percent of our hour we had to fool around here before Debbie got to talk, but I think probably. But wasn't it fun, John?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, John, just, uh, you know, the, the new bridge and all timing, that's all crystal ball territory, but with their existing bridge, also, I just want to, I just want you as the Budget Committee to be really well informed about this. We do have an internal bridge committee. Commissioner Box and myself and Ryan, Kevin and lots of other engineers and people. And we're always talking about managing that bridge and, and keeping it safe and hello, we, what do we do? And over the last year, we've spent a lot of time looking at and answering your exact question, how do we make sure that the bridge um, stays safe and reliable and how do we afford it?
Right.
Um, and we've gotten a lot of great guidance from our engineering consultants on how, how exactly to do that. And I think that is reflected in this budget. So I feel like we're on a really good trajectory there. Hope that helps.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you, and you're staying around, right?
Yeah.
It's not a lot.
Right. I just, you know, that's, I worry about people leaving who get it all figured out.
Oh, I know.
I know. Okay.
John, I think we're doing a good job. I have to give kudos to Patty right now because we're doing a much better job of documenting everything and putting it in a location where the next generation or the next whatever, the people that follow us will be able to find that information. And so one of the challenges that Kevin and I had was, was just finding the documents. Like, you know, where, where did this come from? Where did it go? And um, I was trying to look up some information on the Jensen Building because that's one of the things you may have noticed in here. We had, uh, we had about replacing the roof on the Jensen Building. And I was trying to figure out if, first off, had the port ever done that? Because I knew, knew we purchased it in twenty ten, but I couldn't find, I couldn't find anything. And so I finally though, with Patty's help and, and all this information that she's accumulated, it was actually easy for me to go find all the purchasing papers and everything when we bought it. And that was fifteen years ago. And interestingly enough, it said, there was a, a, a condition assessment done when we purchased it, of course. And it said, the roof is fairly new, but will probably need to be replaced in about fifteen years. And that people would say, the roof probably needs to be replaced. I know. So I, I have to say thank you for.
So for that, some of these other questions that come up, those questions, are we going to go down through them? But I have a question. There was something about Jeanette Road and about Airport Road and the sewer and I didn't know what all that was.
Okay, so I'm not looking.
Sure, sure.
You know, I was going to get there all the way.
Yeah.
This is good.
So I think, so I think this is a good conversation. So, uh, over the last eighteen months of during the planning session, uh, the commission was very laser focused about getting the airport, uh, to the point where it's more than breaking land. And so, uh, so there's some prime uh, real estate just off of Jeanette Road. And so there is some budget authority in there to do paving and some fencing so that we can do some land leases along uh, Jeanette Road. You know, we're not going to get rich off of those land leases. Land leases are pretty inexpensive, probably about thirty cents a square foot, but it's better than.
Creates interest at the airport.
Absolutely.
Generates things.
And it doesn't, we don't, we can't generate enough revenue to justify building it ourselves. And so we're kind of stuck with the land lease. And so really where the commission came back to Jeff Renard, whose nameplate is here, uh, is find other places, increase the, the menu items of vacant land. And so off of Airport Drive, off of Tucker Road on the south side is uh, extending the sewer line. Okay. In there so that we can gain, you know, maybe another two land lease sites. And so, uh, really looking at opportunities to, to increase.
How far does that go down now?
You know, right now I want to say, oh, Ryan, do you know that?
Does it go, it doesn't go all the way?
No, it doesn't.
It goes down partway.
Yeah, I'm thinking it goes down to the end of.
The red house, or the, not red house anymore.
Maybe a couple hundred.
Yeah, I think so.
You want to get down to the corner of his place.
Yeah. And I think the other issue there is that there's this uh, septic, there's a septic field. And so, uh, uh, Jeff is going to basically look and try to uh, get rid of the septic field by, that's the reason for the sewer line, because then that can open up a land lease location at the side of the old septic.
Because those hangers there didn't, did they hook to the sewer? They never did.
I don't think.
I don't think they did, no. I don't think the blue one or the, I don't think either one did, that I can.
I think they are, I think they are now though, aren't they, Ryan?
Uh, I know the helicopter hangar down there, it's got a bathroom in it that's got sewer.
Isn't it?
And I'm not sure if the F P or the, uh, the F P O is on it.
Yeah, I didn't know if I got that.
Yeah, because they definitely have bathrooms, so it's got to go to.
I know, but it used to be, it's all septic, you're assured. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So I think that's, I think that's all kind of, all those uh, costs are there to build up the opportunity for future operating revenue to get, get it out off the toll dependency.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, could you use some more land?
Yes, thank you.
Cross America, building.
I haven't seen that one on the, uh.
I just brought it up, that's why you had.
Okay.
One of the things that, one of the things that significantly impacts our airport is we have a very small footprint.
I know.
Which.
But we'd like to see it.
So I've been trying to get somebody to come out to the state Oregon there and say, I'm going to say, gee whiz, you guys, you need to put eighty acres of industrial whatever around each of your airports that you got, like you did when you did that with the mill sites and say, you know, folks are, are sucking, like, we don't have the industrial property at all around here anymore. And you can't expect people to just all be here because they're supporting the wind turbine business. It, it's just silly that we closed the door on ourselves as much as we have. But the airport is actually going to ask for real estate to be used for hangers or something like that and the, the, the state shall not say no. Okay. There's, there's language in, in some paragraphs and, and O R S that says, yeah, if you, you don't have to satisfy goal twelve, goal eleven, goal one, and goal six and all those goals to do this. They can just say it's all right, but they have to have a, a, an operation like port or whoever's operating the airport, ask that question.
We should get together, not this meeting obviously, but Jeff and I can talk about that later.
I've got a whole folder that I'll just share with you.
Okay. All right. That's good.
I have one other question.
Sure.
The lot next to Twin Peaks along the port.
You know, that, that was one of those things, I think, as we were just getting new archive, getting into archives. Uh, we've got a really cool map now that shows all the property that the port owns.
Key to the properties.
It's literally the corner lot next to just.
It comes out.
Of the twin.
Hayes and Tucker.
Yeah, so it comes out of my property. The port and Twin Peaks come out of my originals.
Basically a parking lot for the restaurant.
Yes.
That's the port.
Yes.
It is the ports.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know a tall story, buildings, but.
Right. You know, so, uh, I want to say it's commercial there.
It's commercial. It was conditionally used and I think Twin Peaks still is.
John, was there a, was there an old, um, dry cleaner there?
There was a beauty shop.
Beauty shop.
And I took the power out for that many years ago. So I, so I know it was there.
We could bring it back.
It was a beauty shop with hair dryers. We sat there and watched the airplanes.
Sure, the first hand was.
Right, yeah, that's what it says.
Yeah.
It might be because it's unconditional. I know Twin Peaks is unconditional use, which you can sort of get from the F P.
And I think one thing that's uh, important is to acknowledge Jeff. Uh, so we do have a contract uh, with, with Jeff. Uh, he's basically our contract airport manager. If you recall, the port had a single position that was called a project manager, but that position included managing all of our buildings.
Right.
Uh, included managing the airport and then managing projects in addition to leasing and selling. Uh, that's a lot uh, for one position. So we've kind of disassembled that position and Jeff is now the contract airport manager. He's a true airport guy and so that's a real plus. Uh, in the budget, we also have a dedicated, after a couple of experiments, we're going to go with a, a dedicated property manager for our industrial and commercial buildings and have somebody that's dedicated in customer service and in really uh, administrative, working with Ryan's team for tenant improvements. We really have a focus, uh, because our properties are going to become more and more important as we get off of bridge tolls. We really want our buildings to produce and not necessarily just to take the positive net income and put it into waterfront wreck, so that we ensure that we've got the money to replace the seven hundred thousand dollar roofs that are going to come up. And so that, that one of the first goals of that uh, property manager will to uh, create a, you know, a, a ten-year capital plan for each of our buildings. And we can show that, not just a placeholder, but we can actually identify a project that's anticipated to be done in that fiscal year.
Debbie, you saw your.
I'm done.
Well, we, I always, I, I looked at here, we have the budget review and we have budget deliberations. So it's nice. So we have, um, so I want to talk a little bit though about funds just real quickly here because the, and this kind of answers part of Judy's question also. One of the things that we did last year, as you guys know, is uh, I took all the funds and, and kind of made them what I think, at least from an accounting standpoint, is a little more logical. So the general fund and the bridge fund are really the only two true operations funds. Um, we have the administration fund, but that's more to accumulate all the overhead, which then gets dispersed out to the, the funds that are actually making money hopefully. Um, and so those are the two operations funds. And then we have the bridge replacement fund, which as Kevin said, we're really crossing our fingers that this is the final year because I think every year we say it's the final year. But there's been some grants and, and just, um, in order to maximize uh, the cash flow opportunities and then what do we charge the which grants, in order to maximize that, uh, we've worked with the Bridge Authority and their contractors to make sure that we're, we're maximizing the money to the Bridge Authority. And so that's kind of left us with some grants that didn't get spent down because we were making sure that everything was being done in a really logical manner. But I really do believe, um, that the bridge replacement fund will go away after this year. So, but don't be surprised if we're back here next year going for a year. Um, and then we have, it, it, it's probably a little bit confusing because I called it the by-state bridge replacement fund. But that one is primarily just, um, in order to really keep the additional toll revenues. So when that toll increase went into effect in September of twenty twenty-three, that additional increment is going towards the new bridge. And so in order to keep that really transparent, I'm putting that into its own fund so that you can see where it comes out of the bridge fund because it's through tolls. Comes out of the bridge fund and it goes into that, that by-state bridge fund and then it gets transferred to the Bridge Authority um, to, to go in for their reserve, um, their reserve account. So that's, that's how our funds kind of work and they're all, they're all very separate. They all have their own cash accounts. They all have their own, you know, revenues and expenses and, and balance accounts and the whole bit. So um, they're, they're very separate and, and hopefully they're more logical. The general fund should be your primary operator. And so it made sense to break out the bridge so that when the bridge does go away, it'll simply be, we take that return. We take that fund out and it goes away and then everything moves forward. Uh, but the general fund now is truly the operations fund. Um, I don't know that I had any, um, really specific comments about it other than talking about the fact that it is budgeted for a deficit that's done on purpose. Um, and that it will, um. The, the. The deficit will. We don't always spend all the money, uh, toward commented that I am, uh, conservative and I am conservative when I'm budgeting. So when I'm budgeting, I estimate revenues low. Hopefully not too low, but then also estimate rep, uh, expenditures on the higher end. Um, I always assume that somebody's gonna work a full year, even though we end up having payroll vacancies. Um, Brian just recently hired a couple of guys because he's had one vacancy since November and the other one for a couple of months. So we always have a little bit of savings here and there, but you can't always count on that, you always, you don't always know where it's gonna fall. So I, I just budget everything fully and then, and then that way also, even if we're in a bit of a deficit, it, it won't really happen that way. And if you actually look, if you, if you want, if you care, um, you can look at the adopted budget column to the left and then the estimated actuals, you'll see that we were budgeted to have one point nine. Almost a two, uh, million dollar deficit, but I'm really estimating that we're gonna end up with about two million. Um. A surplus and part of that is because not all of the capital projects got done, because that's another thing, we do. Um, give the capital asset list our, our best shot, but some things just won't get done for various reasons. Either the weather doesn't work out or we change our mind or whatever, so. Um, I don't, it does not give me heartburn personally to have a, a six point six million dollar deficit because I know that. We won't let it happen or, or that it will be planned for as capital outlay if it does happen. Um, a couple of other things Kevin mentioned, um, potentially selling, uh, lower mill, uh, and or big seven. I also, that, that doesn't, it shows up as revenue in this account, but. I also put it into what we call contingencies, like I put it into a holdings place. So it doesn't cover our expenses because one time, we, we have a policy, a fiscal policy that one time revenues. Should only fund one time expenditures, so again, capital outlay, something along those lines. And the port has not identified what they want to do with that money, so I put it into what I call contingency or, or reserve, um, account. And then if they do, if, if that, uh, if the sale does happen or both sales. And they do decide that they want to do something specific with that money, then we, we will do a budget adjustment at that time for that. But I wanted it, I didn't want it to get lost in operations. And so that's why it's in kind of a separate reserve area.
Cause I, that's an asset, hopefully it'll become another asset.
And become, exactly.
It spends out on, that we don't, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's easy, if you don't separate that out, it's easy for it to fall into covering operations and you really want to know. That, that you have ongoing revenues from your ongoing operations. Um, the bridge fund also, uh, not a lot of change other than again, closing the toll booths, so the direct wages and salaries went down. There are still two front office staff that are, um, charged directly to the bridge because they work almost entirely on tolls on, you know. Freeze buy and all of that with the transponders. Um, and then the other thing with going to electronic tolling is that it did increase the number of images that we have to review, of course. And so we're still going through that, staff is covering that now. Um, there are, uh, contractors that can do that kind of work, so we'll continue to, to analyze whether it's cheaper just to continue to have staff do it or to contract that out.
People pay by mailing that money in or really can't they do it on a computer?
Oh.
And they, they can do it on their phone, they can, so if they go on a credit card.
Yes.
So you don't have every little envelope coming in, okay?
No, we hope not. Uh, well, and then that's.
I still can imagine.
Well, that's also something that can be contracted out, when I worked at the city of Tiger, um, we actually had our utility bill payments. So we had twenty five thousand utility bill accounts. We had those actually sent directly to our, we were with US Bank, we had it sent directly to our bank. And they processed it through, they call it a lockbox, they processed it through the lockbox and sent us a file at the end of the day. So if we end up with, um, that's one thing we're keeping an eye on is to see if we get, if we get too much, then we'll, we'll see about a service like that too. So there's options out there for automating more of this, but we have to constantly doing, be doing cost benefits, so. To see what's, makes some sense. Um, other than that, I don't think there were a lot of changes in, um, in the bridge fund, other than just again, moving over to. Um, electronic tolling and then. Just get, making sure that the suggested, um, maintenance between Ryan and the engineers, they come up with and. The internal bridge committee, they come up with what, um, what we should plan on doing in the next year. Um, the bridge replacement fund again, there's, uh, there was, there were more grants left over than what we had initially anticipated and so, um. Those are just spent, they, they just are offset by expenditures on the bridge. So that's pretty straightforward and then the by state bridge fund also. Um, basically whatever money gets transferred into that account, account gets sent on to the bridge authority.
So question about the bridge replacement fund, the four point five million, is that? The expected amount of money in that fund at the end of this new budgeted year?
That's the amount, actually that's the amount of grants that we still have outstanding, so we have about, um. Oh, I'm looking at. Right.
But, but that we're due.
Right. So we have, yeah, we have about three point five million left in ARPA, which we didn't anticipate or we did budget last year because, but they've spent more state money.
What's the current balance?
Page forty one?
Just for.
Yes, oh yes, sorry, we're on.
What's the current balance of the bridge replacement fund?
Uh, uh, you mean how much cash does it have? Um, it has, I believe, it has right around three million in it because that ARPA money was paid to us in advance.
Right, so. If everything goes as expected, we would expect it to have seven point five million at the end of the next fiscal year. Alright?
Actually it'll have zero because.
Yeah, I know, but, but, but you get what I'm asking about, like the amount of money involved in the grants, there, there's three million, we're gonna get four and a half, right?
We know.
No?
No, the three million in there is part of the three, so we have about three point five million in ARPA.
Yeah.
That cash is sitting in. The bank right now.
Right.
Except for about five hundred thousand, we're gonna pay that to vendors.
Yes.
And say we're done.
Okay. Okay.
That's how that one works, it's a weird, it's a weird grant.
That money's getting paid out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's going by like, and then when we move, when we move to the buy state.
Uh huh.
Uh, bridge replacement fund.
Right.
Which page?
Uh, forty five. And that's money that's going from tolls, right, to build up. How much money is there right now?
Zero.
Zero.
Because that money transfers in from the bridge fund and then I pay it to the bridge authority. I made the transfer today for, for April.
Okay, it's a regular, it's like.
It's a regular.
Okay, and. So I just want to talk about, just briefly, the proposed budget is three point eight million for, for this next year. And if we go to page seventy one and we've looked at the, uh, scheduled revenues expenditure presented for the budget. And we go to the very top. We have the bridge fund, which is not the bridge replacement fund or the buy state bridge fund, it is sort of the actual operating.
Sprint.
Of the bridge. Um. So I can see there the, we've got top there, that's how much money is gonna be transferred into the buy state.
Mm hmm.
Um. And then there's this, and then I see over there other transfers, there's that two hundred eighty nine thousand that says like potentially for the purrs.
Yes.
And then the flat two million to go into the port's general fund.
Yes.
So here's a question, and maybe it's like a chicken and egg question. Was the two million bribe that somehow, it's such a nice flat number?
Well, it's probably gonna be like two million and fifty three thousand dollars, I think that's what we're transferring this year.
Okay.
Because it's, it's, it's approximately fifty cents of every crossing.
Right.
So if four million cars go across the bridge, we get two million dollars to go into the general fund.
Okay, and that is sort of like whatever's left after. The personnel services and material services, all that stuff's paid for, that's the transfer into the buy state bridge fund, that's what was left over after we take our, or is it vice versa? That's what I'm, I'm.
The, 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 the transfer to the bridge authority.
Yes.
Comes first.
That comes first, that three point eight million.
Yes.
Like boom, they're getting that much.
Yes. Because that's actual toll revenue that is collected every day.
Right, and we made it part of the intergovernmental I G A, like we're gonna give them.
Yes.
This. So I'm just kind of looking through this bridge fund, we've got our revenues and we've got our various costs, we've got our net and we've got our capital outlay. And then we've got the required transfer and then whatever's left over is about that two million. Right, which would go to the, the port's general fund.
Well, if we make that transfer, if, if everything here in this budget played out.
Yes.
We would be a negative one point, I mean, we would be spending down the fund balance, if you will, we would be spending down the bridge's savings account by one point three million. That's that last column.
Yes. Right.
So if we make the, and we can make the two million.
Uh huh.
Because that is actual crossings.
Yeah.
So we can justify it.
Yeah.
But it will, if everything else comes to pass, it will mean that they're eating into their savings account by one point three million.
The savings account for?
The bridge fund, they have cash right now, they have about five million or five point.
Not the buy state bridge replacement fund, the bridge fund.
That bridge, that, that's the physical bridge.
Okay, and how much is in that?
About five point five million.
Shitty right now, okay, okay, so. So the projected budget is saying, hey, that's gonna reduce if everything goes this way.
Mm hmm.
By one point three.
Yes.
And the, the, the extra two hundred eighty nine thousand allocation for purrs basically is kind of reaching into that.
Mm hmm.
Right. Um, okay, great. I just want to be crystal clear on understanding the trail of monies.
I know, it's, yes, it can get confused.
It's fantastic because it's all so. Transparent and specific that I can ask these questions and be like.
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question about, you know, the billing now, if the money doesn't come, people don't send. Costings, do we get fifty cents on what's paid and then?
Yes.
So if the money hasn't come yet.
Right, then we don't get it.
Like, since this year, uh, our projections didn't come in.
I know, so what are the ghetto ones? Is there a lot?
What's that?
Well, we not, um, we don't really have the numbers on that yet because we just went to all electronic tolling, so we don't have the numbers on that yet. Um, I think that we're better than the national average, plus we can put a hold for at least anybody in Oregon. We can put a hold on their registration and they can't register, they can't renew their registration on their car if they owe tolls.
Oh, Oregon, we can't do Washington.
We, I'm gonna talk to, um, the Washington Department of Transportation, I've been working with them on various projects and I'm going to see. I mean, I'll have to talk to our legal team too, but I was going to see if there's something that we can do. Because I'm not sure what they're going to see, Wash Dot, not to get too far off topic, but they're gonna start tolling the interstate bridge on I five. Probably in about a year, year and a half. Yes, to start raising money for that replacement bridge. And, and that's gonna be Wash Dot, but that's going to be a lot of Oregon residents. And it will be all electronic, so I'm curious what they're doing, you know, to make their collections, to make sure they're getting their collections. Yeah, so I was gonna talk to them and see what.
When does that happen?
Um, well, they were saying April of point six, but I don't think they're necessarily on track.
Is that a bridge or soon as you get on Washington?
Probably. Yeah, it'll be on the, the, the tolls, they call them gantries, the thing they put over the top that we transponder. Um, those will be on the Washington side. Um, but it will be, it will be told both directions, north and south, is the plan. Yeah.
Those Kessy and lots, are they going all electronic or?
No. They're getting a lot of questions about that, but no, they're, they're not set up to do it. We had, we have, we kind of phased ours in because we have a lot of people that were going through and just not paying. So we call them run-throughs and so we set up electronic tolling at that time and that was maybe eighteen or nineteen, I think, I'm not sure, it was a while back. And, um, and then we went to overnight tolling about a year and a half ago, two years ago now, right? Twenty twenty three, maybe twenty three, I guess was, wasn't it? Um, we went to the overnight all electronic, which was almost no traffic, that's, I was like, we gotta do something, we're paying somebody who's sitting in the toll booth and sometimes, you know. Sometimes no cars, but a lot of times just one or two cars in the middle of the night going across the bridge, so. So yeah, we really need to do something about that. So we kind of phased ours in. Uh, but we already have the equipment, the equipment's fairly expensive to set up, so, um, Kessy and Locks hasn't gotten a pencil out yet for them, I don't think.
But Wash Dot being a different system than we're using.
Yeah, and so that's, there is money in this budget, um, and actually we had put it in last year, they got some other things going on, so we kind of got behind on this. But I believe there is, uh, seventy five thousand dollars to become interoperable with, with Washington. And there's a lot of, back east especially, um, there's lots of systems that are interoperable back there, so there's already a system for us to pattern ours on. We won't be like recreating the wheel, there's a, there's a good pattern to use to, to get interoperable. So hopefully we are, and especially I'm, I'm really pushing them because. Once there's a bunch of people in Portland that have Washington.
Right.
They call it the go, the go transponders, I'd really like it to work with, with ours and, and vice versa. I'm hoping that that will happen soon.
Would that just be a software?
It's mostly software, um. I know that our, um. The company is called T D S, they, they do our lane read, the readers that like read how many axles are on the truck and things like that. They had to do some kind of an adjustment in order for us to just read the, the go tags. But we've been working on that because I wanted to know how many there were now anyway. Washington is able to read our tags and so they, and I don't remember what the numbers were, but they had the numbers for all their different locations of how many. Freeze body tags went through. Each, um. Yeah, each facility has, but they, but, but we're not interoperable yet, so they can't bill.
Oh, that's.
But they can read them. Um, each facility has like the, uh. A one or two digit number at the beginning of the code so that you can tell what, where it's from or the, where your transponder is from. I learned way more about this than I ever managed, I forgot about, about transponders.
Yeah, I'm kinda thinking maybe you ought to be able to start across the canyon. Okay, so if you did some misbrand, bad things over Oregon and then you went across the bridge, built the night. When nobody was there looking at things, but your cameras were on and they took pictures of the big smile on face when you went through there. And then you caught the guys, you could admit the cost for you to look around and find a particular bunch of stuff to the port.
So we do assist the police, actually, we, we have assisted the police with identifying, unfortunately, our cameras are not good enough. And especially if the windows are a little bit tinted, it's not good enough to get a, a facial image.
They did the same.
I know, that's not.
So yeah, we do.
They keep them off.
Get them off. Start charging them for that, yeah. Yeah, we've, we've assisted with stolen parts and, and a hit and run, not too long ago.
There's no big dollars.
I don't think so, but yeah. I haven't figured that one out yet, if we figure out a way.
So that would be great. Pay for any information at least.
Yes. So far there haven't been any, uh, uh.
So you bring words.
So sorry, crack shop insurance company, you're a car rat.
Well, I'm just thinking you guys just a ton of baseball by right now, you can find out who's expired. And, and it means the fact that it's quite different. And somebody wants to sit there and, you know, talk about this type of vibe. So, figure out a way to compute it, I mean, just, you know, look at the tag, say, that one. That one's from Texas, so we're not gonna pull out.
But we have to hire John to be our enhancement officer.
If we can use an extra pair of eyes.
I'm just gonna send it to have, look and then pop up and say, there it is. Okay, so where are we?
Um. I'm mostly done, were there questions, I, I think that payroll might have been a little bit confusing because we were refiguring, um. What we're doing, you know, because we, we've been contracting out a lot and so, um, our numbers are going down. We do have. Daryl has announced her retirement.
Oh.
Oh, I didn't hear that, that didn't happen, so.
Exactly, so.
A year from now.
I, I'll give you an heads up.
So, and it was super awesome, I have to say thank you, but, so, but what we did do, went ahead and budgeted for someone's, because nobody else knows what Daryl does. We have eleven people. Eleven, eleven people. Yes, and so, well, I can only add one, that's somebody that can come in at some point during the year and, yeah, basically, um.
Shadow.
Shadow her, thank you, yes, shadow her, um, for a while so that the rest of us will be like deer in the headlights when, well, we'll still be here. Um, I, I know. So, so anyway, um, so we do have that extra person that, so that. Depending on what else we do during the year, but next year our F P E will definitely go down by one because, um.
You know, we'll retire.
We'll already have her replacement, hopefully. Someone will attempt to replace her. Um, but other than that, um, the CPI was fairly, I think, relatively, uh, small, uh, two point six cent. Wasn't one of those shocking ones like we've had in the past a few times. Um, and then, oh, and then to, I remember the, Tor was at you that asked about. So the number that Kevin used in order to counterlay is one that includes, um, contingency and everything in it. It would be, worst case, it basically, the numbers that end up in the budget are kind of, I guess, worst case scenario, I guess, is the best way to put it. The numbers that I have in the, uh, in the more detail on page sixty-one, sixty-three, those are a little more finessed. And it actually has the payroll budget going down by about five percent. And the, uh, almost twelve percent that you were pointing out was, uh, payroll and benefits.
Okay.
So it was a combination of the, of the two that comes up with the, um, almost twelve percent decrease.
Right, and I think that twelve percent is the more important number, actually, because that's a more accurate reflection of everything that it costs for employees.
Yes, yes, and so, um, and, and the other thing is, is that, so our FTE. Went down, of course, but it didn't go down as much as you might expect, because we did expand the summer help just a little bit. And then they're kind of extending, obviously, beyond summer these days, um, the seasonal help. Because we're trying, we're trying to figure out how to get the bathrooms open sooner and get the waterfront looking good for the summer and things like that. So poor Ryan, we're like, stop doing what you're doing and go work on the waterfront. Um, but in order to stop interrupting him constantly, we're trying to get him some more help in the summertime to do things like that. So, but then, those people, those employees, um, don't get full benefits. And so that's why the benefit amounts decrease, um, a bit more than, than the salary, um, and wages and salaries decreased. Um. And I think, unless there's other questions, I'm happy to answer if you want to.
I have non-budgetary questions, which I am gonna table for a more appropriate venue. Make this thing go super crazy, huh?
So I'm gonna, I tried to talk to Daryl already, but, and the budget, it doesn't make sense to budget in, uh. An outside source for bathroom maintenance, rather than hiring somebody.
We've talked about that, um, Daryl's gonna give me numbers on what that would be to see. And we're not having a ton of luck hiring somebody anyway, so. Um, it has been a fairly expensive proposition. We've looked at it in the past, and it was fairly expensive. Um, and so, I, they, they, unfortunately, everybody kind of falls into that same problem of trying to find help in the summer. And so salaries are, wages are pretty high here in Hood River. And so just finding that help in the summertime can be a challenge, for whether you're the port or whether you're a janitorial service or whatever. So I know in the past, um, in fact, it was last year or two years ago, Ryan, you took a lot of janitors around to look at the restrooms. But I think, didn't some of them want year-round contracts more so than summer contracts?
And I'm actually with the cleanings is, you know, like at the event site, you could clean it eight times a day or you can clean it once. So they want a set schedule, and you can't have a set schedule.
We don't know the crap.
You just don't know. So, like the summer help, you know, that they go through every hour just to check, you know, if it needs cleaning, they stop to clean it. Or if they have to take out garbages, most of these janitorial contractors won't do the garbages on waterfronts. So there's like a, a bunch of moving parts that don't really make sense. We did have somebody that, uh, does porta potters also, and he wants fifty bucks a bathroom for cleaning. So that equals out, it's five hundred bucks a cleaning per day, which at multiple times a day, that doesn't really make sense.
Part of our problem is that it's, you know, wind reliant, so we have the no days.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good there, and all of a sudden, we have super windy days. So to be efficient with that, Ryan juggled his staff, like, okay, you're off weed whipping, okay, you're back to bathroom. And then the other problem is being able to be flexible when we have issues, backups. And that happens all the time, and the janitorial companies can't respond to that. So we've gone through all the legwork, and Ryan, I can't say we, Ryan has really done the labor on the janitorial part of it. And it just doesn't seem feasible to want to give around a contract, and it, it would just be super, super expensive. So we're still trying to work through that, and, you know, Ryan's also looked through, flexing with, okay, well, what if we contract out the weed whipping or the landscaping? That's all funny names until there's irrigation problems, so that part of it has, you know, he's looked at Crystal Greens out of Portland. And that would require switching over our whole system to a different system than what we have, because they look at everything electronically. And again, just responding to blowouts. It's really hard. Still trying, but what we've come across, say, by it's not been pretty.
What, what is the season right now for the bathrooms? Well, we usually don't get anything but high school students or college students.
Yeah.
So that doesn't happen until, you know, late June.
Yeah.
Um, this, so that's when they're open, is when we can't staff.
When we want to get a staff.
Because is what happens, is if we open them, they gotta be closed by two thirty, and they're not open on the weekends. And so we get a bunch of complaints that, hey, they're only open a few hours a day. So if you can't just have them open like they used to, it saves the office, you know, a hundred phone calls a day about a hundred battles. So this year, we actually have four employee, or four summer seasonal health that are not in schools, so they're actually starting tomorrow. So once I get them trained up, they will be going to bathrooms here.
Okay.
Trying to do also before Memorial Day weekend. It's really hard when Memorial Day is this early.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And so you're, again, backing everything up, but if Ryan can get the right people in, um. To, to make it happen, we will get them open. So, you know, we're trying everything, but we have our hands tied, um, with a lot of the restrictions with staff. And then even reviewing all of the goalie compliance of, um, if you're, you know, sixteen years old, you can't do these things. You're eight, under eighteen, you can't do all of this stuff, so, um, all of the things you can't do, we did when we were tense. But I'm reading through that this morning, and I was just dying, like, you can't stack wood? You can't have a bee on a ladder to clean a window? You can't run a lawnsuit? You can't drive a truck? You can't use a power washer? I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are really limited, so when you're like, bring in high school kids.
Uh. There are blurred boats.
Um, it's, we've got some challenges, but we're trying to work through them, but, you know, everybody can be out there and be an armchair. Facility manager, waterfront manager, being like, just bring in kids and have them do it. Like.
Yeah.
Break them along. Anyways, we're trying, but she's hiring some people that are a little bit older, and that makes a really big difference in being able to get things done that we need.
And unfortunately, that's year to year, and I never know if I'm gonna get a bunch of sixteen-year-olds, you know, I've had a sixteen-year-old years ago. You know, whoever applies and any people, that's who I get, so.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
And also, if we did find contractors, we can always shift the money between personnel services and contracting. Um, that's what we actually did during this fiscal year, and, and you may see it come to the commission. I still haven't decided if we're gonna go over budget for it or not, but at the airport, because we had a, we had budgeted. To have an actual employee managing the airport, but we ended up with contractors, so, um, we just, we shift things as necessary.
What if we had the kind of toilets you have to A to Z?
Okay.
You have to put seventy-five cents on to open the door, so.
Something.
It's common in Europe.
It is, it's very common.
Say, that's in Mexico too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But somebody still has to clean it, though.
Yeah.
Well, it'll pay for the cleaning.
True. Unless, unless they do the quarters with the string on them.
Yeah.
We'll see, we have a holding the door for each other for the next.
Well, and, uh, yeah, so then, and then you.
We're gonna stop.
Analization, people trying to, like, open them up. Um.
Tap to.
To be continued on. Ongoing.
It's the new motto. Okay, I'm not digressing, it's a title.
A little bit. If Ben was here, my life would.
Better be smiling. Budget committee. Nobody's knocking on your head.
I'd like to say on the record, I was joking. I don't want people to have to pay to go this far. Yes, these meetings are recording.
I'm not joking.
Spring.
Uh, that's really all I have. We've, we've kind of gone all around, but I don't know if there's additional questions, or if you guys thought of things as we were talking.
Just, I've, I've always been concerned about how the work will be financially compensated for. It's the impact of the bridge construction and its representation and those kinds of things. And for relocation benefits are, are fairly generous normally, if you take advantage of them. I'm just wondering, that's not really a budget issue, at least not at the moment. Maybe it's more of a capital issue on the bridge budgeting side, but. Have you had a conversation with?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You're absolutely right. There, there's probably five or six different pots of money in the bridge replacement effort. One is the, uh, relocation of this building. So, uh, and I believe in this budget, we've got five hundred thousand dollars, uh, set aside for, uh, that consideration. Uh, the commission's gone through, we're just about to finish up a, a survey of potential sites where we could be relocated. And so, you know, with the fact that everything's been pushed back a couple of years, this report can kind of sit on a shelf, and we will have to redo it. We can just, you know, when we're ready, we can update the numbers. But that's one, is we're gonna be reimbursed by the project for our relocation. The second is that this land has a value to it, and the project will need to acquire this land. And so there will be a series of appraisals, yellow book appraisals, uh, to figure out what's the value of this land, and that should come to the port as well. And then that's, that's another, that's a way that you could build a building, or you could, again, put it into some type of revenue generator. Uh, you know, for the overall general fund, um, trying to think, there's, um. Again, we'll continue to have the reimbursement of staff.
Four nights, this thing up.
Uh, but I think that's a six F, six F, uh, and then the relocation. They were looking to find, uh, land that wasn't, uh, currently recreation, so that they could convert it. Because even though they're gonna acquire this land, it's, uh, it's.
Technically.
It's technically six F land, and so there, the project's gonna have to find. Non-recreational land that can be converted into recreational use, so that's kind of a third pot. Um, that's very.
People shake those off, and just, a me square feet are actually not, not available for space recreational use and all those kinds of things, the split hairs.
Yeah.
But it's common. I'm, I'm thinking more about, are we being paid for just moving to another building?
Yeah.
Or do we get a building, get a building replacement?
So the, the first one I was, is the, uh, relocation, which will just be a flat fee. So there's a, federal highways has a relocation amount, and it would be for any tenant.
Right.
Or anybody that needed to be relocated, there would just be a flat fee. They're not gonna ask for reimburse or invoices or receipts or anything like that. It'll just be, here's your, I'm guessing that's probably somewhere in the twenty, twenty, fifty, that, just, because it's just moving the physical stuff out here.
Right.
To our new place, not a huge dollar amount. The bigger one is actually the land, because that's what, one option for the commission is that that would be the funding that would pay for, you know, our, our future home. Theoretically.
Well, not a building, you're losing that fiscal asset.
Exactly, yeah.
So do you anticipate there'll be a awkward situation where you have the project staff? And the port staff, who in this case have very different interests in terms of their representation. Of their constituents.
Oh, the Bridge Authority?
I've already been kicked out, so I have, I have to represent the port.
I mean, I, I would say that, you know, the Bridge Authority wants the best and lowest option for them, and we want the best and highest option for us. And it's gonna be a negotiation, but I do know that at the end of the day, the Bridge Authority is very well aware that a lot of this is federal funding. And so it's more of doing the right application, the right processes to make sure that the funds are allocated appropriately.
Right, oh, that, very.
Yeah, and, and ODOT actually has to do the negotiation with the port. Um, they, the legal has already gotten involved in this, and so that, that's, I was joking, but I said I've been kicked out, but yeah, they. They basically said that, uh, Commissioner Fox, Kevin and I have a conflict of interest. Um, even though it's not a personal conflict of interest, obviously, but they don't want us representing.
These are our interim titles.
Yes.
In some ways, it's, it's good that you're not being put there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, and I think too, in the very beginning, there was, there was, um, lighthearted conversations of, well, click attack, kick in some land, and maybe the port would donate some land. And I think that in, in the early stages, those were all nice conversations to have, but when we come down to the accounting of it, we do need to. Account for everything and, and make it fair.
Because when it's done, that's all you have.
Yes.
For that future, we're, it makes much.
How much of a building you need. You don't have as many folks now.
Well, I'm gonna say.
What would work for you. Yeah, I don't say it was five thousand square, I don't remember. I think it was five thousand square feet. It depend, it depends on if the facilities and the admin are in the same locale. That makes a big, there's a big cost savings there.
We've been working with an architecture firm to determine exactly that.
You're an architect, all the points. Yeah. But yes, that, that report will be done at, I believe, at the May twentieth, that'll be done. Okay, so if you need some ground in Hood River, you're not gonna get any at all, right? So the land, the, the sites that are being looked at are include the Marina East Building is one, uh, the Wasco Building, which is out on Industrial Loop. We're looking at, uh, a site at the airport off of, uh, uh, right there at Airport Drive. I guess that would be the southwest corner of the airport. Uh, and then we're also looking at a lease location, just to see if it made sense long term. For the port to enter into a lease, just, you know, just to kind of have something to compare with. So there's gonna be about four or five examples. Uh, certainly, we're not, the commission and staff are not gonna be, we're not gonna be making any recommendations July one. On this until we know that the financing is certain. Obviously, new, new construction is about a twenty-four month, uh, you, you know, so. You have to be prepared, even though you're not pulling the trigger right away, because if it does take twenty-four months, when you do get the financing done, we need to be able to pull the trigger.
There may be some advantages to acquiring a piece of prime property you don't currently own without. And not take something's potential revenue generator prior to current inventory.
Yeah, especially if it's light industrial, that's maybe not terribly, uh, valuable at this point, absolutely.
It's an issue that I've thought about for a long time, as discussion about the, you know, the bridge and its financing and the impact on the, uh, the port. As going on, it's kind of a thing that didn't get talked about, but it's a huge part of what's gonna impact us in the future.
Man, I think you bring up a good point. I, I know we've all talked about it, it's, we've got a wonderful location here, but is it the highest and best use for? Non-revenue, revenue generating admin building to be on this primed spot?
I think bridge or no bridge, we'd be, still be having this conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's not training costs, only if you actually put, put something more guiding here, probably commercial. So what happens to the, the footprint of the right away from the current bridge? Is that just gonna be parkland or can you use it for your swamp?
My understanding was that they were looking at, uh, so one of the things about the new bridge is that there's gonna be a huge amount of runoff. Rain and snow runoff, because right now it all goes into the river. And so everything's gonna get chained off to each side, and so they are gonna need a pretty significant bioswell. And so one of the thoughts is that area, uh, where the current, uh, bridge could be used as a bioswell. And so one of the thoughts is that area, uh, where the current, uh, bridge could be used as a bioswell.
So you have bioswells for the bridge, if you don't have a bioswell, then, i.e. four going offside the river for sixty miles, right? Uh, how's that work?
Yeah, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Well, you just need to measure this bridge, it's nineteen or twenty-one feet or whatever it is, and then subtract that right off the width of the bridge that you're putting in.
Yeah.
Say you only add X amount out, so you don't have to bother. Okay, so also AD zone, I think AD zone would support your building, if you had some. I think it's in the AD zone list, I mean, it's single spaced, it's a page and a half, things you can do in an AD zone, truly amaze you. I mean, you could have a cylinder mat, or you could have a gas station, or you could have any, any number of things, cause they get added on because somebody wanted to do it next to an airport, and the state said, oh, okay, yeah, that's fine. So it makes the list quite long. And right there, where you're talking about, the end of the road there.
If you guys are all gonna license apply, you probably all wanna get the airport.
Man, that's one of the things, uh, when you're looking at FAA and the county, and I think, John, you alluded to that, is making sure that state land use goals and the FAA rules line up, because they don't always.
They don't ever.
So, uh, are you?
Sure, yeah, you have your motions that you have to make.
We need a motion to, uh, move our tax levy at, like, oh, three, three, two thousand for FY twenty-five, twenty-six. Both that we, we saw approve a motion for, uh, tax levy. We can actually do both at the same time, can't we? Well, I'm sure we can.
Yeah.
Also, I would approve that, the, the, but I think as amended, we didn't really.
We didn't amend it so far anyway.
Yeah, just fine, okay.
And I say.
Everybody in favor of doing that? Close.
Too fast.
I'm gonna push seven zero for that. Maybe that one's good.
Okay.
And then with that, I guess, the budget meeting is adjourned, I'm gonna thank you guys for your time and for your.
Thank you for your patience and all the questions.
Oh, they're good.
Appreciate it.
Well, I just wanna say, I've been to more budget committee meetings than I could ever count, and I wanna thank our budget committee because you are all more involved than any others, like the, as, as the citizen members are more involved than anybody I've ever, ever seen before. So, and I really appreciate it.